Okay, so now we are recording. Thank you. And for those that have joined by the computer, feel free to use the chat because I'll keep my eye on that as well. So I'll just repeat what I was saying for the purposes of the recording. That because this is a regular planning commission meeting, public comment is saved to the end. And we'll try to hear from as many people as we can with the respect and understanding that this meeting was originally planned to last for an hour. The first order of business is a recap of the trails discussion to date. And if there's any questions or concerns or comments from the planning commission members only at this point about process or other topics or timeline. Yeah, Janet, go ahead. You've got to unmute yourself.
She's still muted.
Okay.
There you go.
Yeah, sorry. So we were gonna come up with a survey at some point, but have we not talked about that? Or I know that was somewhere along the line, I thought we talked about having some kind of survey that would go out to the community. Is this the time to talk about that? Or is that?
Yeah. Yeah, certainly. So I can kind of tell you what my original thinking was and then what my revised thinking and potential timeline, which is something I was hoping we could discuss tonight. And that was that after the first meeting, that there would have been enough background knowledge for us to develop a survey with adequate questions to the community. And that we would put it out after the second meeting for responses due by the third meeting. So kind of thinking about that middle timeframe to get responses back. It became apparent to me very quickly that there was some additional community knowledge building that needed to happen before we could ask people to respond in a meaningful and informed way to a survey. And so that was something that I was hoping we could talk about tonight to start to put together the folks who would develop those questions. And then the timing for getting it out, if it makes sense after the next meeting or at the end of the four series. So certainly something we can discuss as well.
Did we want to perhaps do that after we've all seen the trails? I know there was talk of going out and seeing everything.
Yep, great question. So I'm certainly open to what others feel like. I was also hoping that we could talk tonight about the visiting the trails timeframe and having somebody take the lead on organizing that opportunity, working with the landowners and figuring out if it should be a community-wide event, if we should do two. One, just for the planning commission and the landowners, one for the public, plus maybe some subject matter experts on trails management. Wet habitats and safely transversing them and using them, things like that. So I think, I do think those two things are linked. My, my preference, and again, certainly open to others' feedback, would be to see the trails after snow melt and before the land dries out, so we can see them at like their most sensitive nature, state, state and time.
Laura, I would, I would work with anybody else who's interested in setting that up. Let every you people on the planning commission, would you rather do it as two groups or do you want to do it as one? And I also, while I'm on here, I'm really for holding off on this survey until people in town know what we're surveying.
Yeah.
I think of meeting and walking the trails and talking about stuff. And there's a lot of confusion with a lot of people about just legal trails, class four, class three, the landowners, all of that. But I will, I'll volunteer to help set up.
Okay. Thanks. Will somebody work with Brenda? Just because I know that's can be a lot of coordination for four different trails and then working with the landowners.
I'd be happy if I can work with Brenda, if that's, I don't know who else.
I would be willing to work with her too.
Great. All right. Brenda, Janet, Izzy, you're now the trails visitation team.
Coordinators.
Yeah. So I was thinking maybe sometime in late April or May, depending on when snow melt happens and how long it takes to get organized.
Yeah, and I would, you know, I definitely think the town's opening it up to the townspeople is cool, too.
Yeah, so maybe. John, if you want to mute yourself, or I can mute you, whichever. Thinking about, maybe we can take a few minutes to talk through strategy here. If it's if it's appropriate, I was thinking about some subject matter experts to join us because I certainly can see and understand a washed out area or impacts of travel when ground is wet. But understanding the real implications for specific trails, for specific usages of during different times of the year or of different modes of transportation, I think would be really helpful. And I don't know if that kind of visit is particularly helpful if we have a large group. So wanting to kind of get some suggestions there.
I can also offer that state person park, see if he's interested in coming down. And that's a good point to have it a smaller group so we can ask some pointed questions and hear one another and so maybe that kind of leads us into two, two meetings, two walks. Possibly. But I'll ask him if that's something he's up for because he's in charge of all the state.
Okay. Yeah, and if, if that's not something that's in his bailiwick, then if he could point us to the right person.
Okay.
That would be great. And I've got some contacts at FPR as well that I could reach out to if, if your contact ends up not knowing or not being the right person.
Yeah, he's, he's the one in charge, I guess, for the trails.
That's a good, good place to start, the person in charge.
Okay.
All right. And then Izzy, you've got your hand up.
Yeah, I just, I think it makes sense to do a walkthrough with the experts in the planning commission. Because to me, it seems kind of, I don't know what the right word is, but foolish, I guess, to, to go there and have not seen them with the public. You know, I'm like, oh, look at this, we didn't know that either. It would make sense to me that if the planning commission and the experts did a walkthrough first, and then we opened up to the public with the experts, if, if, I don't know if that's feasible. You know, if that's asking too much, but I think, you know, so then the public can ask questions as well. I mean, so then we're a little more prepared. It's just.
Thanks, Janet. You still have your hand up.
Sorry.
It's okay.
Hand should be down.
It's all right. It's all right. So does everybody on the planning commission feel comfortable approaching this as two potential walks? One for the planning commission. And maybe we should consider also including the conservation commission, given their prior work here and a bit of a deeper knowledge of the history of the trails. And a state subject matter expert, and then an open trails walk day for the community. Shane, you've got your hand up. Good use of Zoom, Shane.
Oh, yeah, we're, we're working on it.
You're like leaps and bounds.
Just wanted to say, yeah, I agree with, I think that it's a good idea to do the, the two walks. I just want to agree with everybody else on that.
Thanks. And how do folks feel about making it a joint commission, planning commission, conservation commission first? And then the open to the public plus subject matter experts.
And it sounds good to me.
Great. Shane's got a thumbs up. Love it.
He must have help.
It's got some supported Zoom happening right here. Nice work, Janet.
I'm learning.
I should be giving out bonus points or little prizes to people who figure out how to use Zoom.
We should know by now, right?
Yeah. All right. So Brenda, Izzy and Janet, your task is to set up one trails walk, planning commission, conservation commission, probably should invite the select board as well to attend if they so desire. Plus, subject matter experts, and then a second walk open to the public. Potentially with the same subject matter experts, if possible. Sometime in the late April, May timeframe.
Okay.
Great. Thanks.
There we go.
I love when we get things done. Yes, Janet, nice thumbs up. Okay, so then the next question was the idea of a survey of the community of the uses, usages of the town legal trails and their perspective and feedback there. I'm happy to be flexible with the timing, if it makes sense to do that post-walk of the trails.
Laura, I think, I think you're right to do it after the, the walk. It seems like every time I, I get on, I learn something more. And it seems as if, you know, when we do a survey and people have no idea really what we're, we're asking of them, you know, that, that seems pretty counterproductive. So I think that's, that's a wise timing, that we may even want to consider some sort of an informational meeting. For those people who aren't going to get to do the walk, or, or, you know, who just really don't know what's going on.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. We could take pictures, annotate the pictures, provide some notes for what we learned. Janet, you've got your hand raised.
I was just gonna be in agreement with Nancy. I think it has to come after, you know, we, we walk and, and see everything and have the second walk with people in the community and then but I also feel that the survey really needs to be heavily, we have to think of every possible way we can contact people so that we don't get the afterwards, well, I didn't know kind of thing. So we want to avoid that.
Agreed. Okay, so Rudy, you've got your hand up.
Along those lines, I totally agree with those sentiments and would highly recommend that we get something in the Tunbridge Quarterly.
Yes, the due date for that is March 15th, maybe with a day or two of latitude. We're really kind. So if there's a way to get those dates set prior to the 15th, I'm happy to draft the article and then we can put those in. If the, if the trails visitation team feels like you can get something maybe put together in the next 10 days, as far as getting dates together.
Yeah.
Okay. Great. Yeah. So if you can just shoot those dates to me, then I can add that into the TQ. Kudos, Brenda, to you, using the thumbs up. Okay, so then survey will be pushed back to potentially a late May release, which I think makes total sense, supportive of that approach. And we'll put together a survey team at a later meeting. So I'm happy to play a lead role there. Just because I've had experience in my academic professional life with survey development, so we'll need some assistance, of course, with developing the questions and making sure that they make sense for the questions at hand. But we can do that team a little bit later on. Are there?
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
So when the select board first got in touch with you, they I know, I'm not really sure what their whole objective was. I'm sure they had more than just, you know, what kind of traffic on the road or not, some policy. Did it also include the logging stuff? As we did research on this, I noticed that the sample ones showed that the select board is the one that allows, they have to get permission to do the logging in a certain way. A lot like the trail, Eliza, that you were talking about, that was put back together in a nice. So do, could you tell us a little more exactly what the select board was looking for?
So my, yeah, sorry, go ahead.
That's it.
Okay. My understanding is that the select board would like a policy recommendation for usage of the four legal trails in town. So the policy examples that we have found that are on the website include the kinds of pedestrian or wheeled vehicle access that's allowable. Farming and forest implement use and access or use as a right of way to get to property to do those activities. And then the specific disallowance, I guess, if that's a word, during certain times of year by either certain modes of transport or of the trails as a whole. So I think there's a number of things that we need to and can and should consider based on the examples that we've seen and the authority of the select board to set the policy for usage and access to the legal trails. Is that what you were looking for, Brenda?
Yeah, just wanted a good summary.
Yeah. So that's, that's the place that I'm starting from. If, if there's a different understanding, we can certainly adjust our approach, but I believe that that is what they would like as a policy recommendation from us. And then knowing the powers of the select board to allow or restrict certain activities or create ordinances, which has a whole other public process with it. We can include that in our suggestion as well, if that's the way that we think it should go. Janet, is that a new hand or an old hand?
That's a new hand.
All right.
Just stepping back to the, the walk and the survey kind of thing for just a sec. Because we do have town meeting on May 22nd. And so I was wondering if we wanted to do some presentation at that time? That, you know, because in theory, we should have the walks available and that would be a time when we would be able to be in touch with a lot more people in town, perhaps.
That's a great question. And actually, a couple of other folks have brought up town meeting as an opportunity for us to share information. I think we should keep that on our radar, not knowing exactly what the format is going to be and the participation, I mean, not that we can ever predict, predictive participation, participation. I can't talk because it's getting late and I've been on calls all day, participation level. But at least when it's at the school, there are certain things that we can anticipate and expect. If we're sitting in cars at the fairgrounds, is it going to be an effective method for getting information to people and receiving feedback and having a discussion? So that's just something that I'd like to certainly cross that bridge as we get a little bit closer to town meeting and we have a better sense of how the meeting itself is going to run. If that seems amenable to the planning commission.
I was just thinking about just presenting information because haven't you haven't, hasn't the planning commission in the past had a little time to get up and say what they've been doing, what we've been doing? You know, at town meeting. So I think I was thinking in terms more of that and not necessarily a lot of discussion to happen, which of course, you know, I don't mean to say people shouldn't discuss it, but you know, the whole idea is just to like put this on the forefront of what the planning commission is working on.
Yeah, gotcha. Yeah, and we could have materials written up and printed that people could receive when they pull in or when they park, whenever, whatever that situation is going to look like. So we could think about developing FAQ about legal trails or something like that, that we could hand out to help inform people that haven't otherwise been able to participate. And then Shane, I think you had your hand up. But maybe you put it down.
Yeah, I, I put it back down.
Okay.
But I, I guess I could go back to the question. So when we talk about what are charts from the select board, my question is, are they also wanting us to define what a legal trail is with town of Tunbridge? So meaning also thinking about the, what the legal trail right away is, or is that already, it sounds like that's a little open to, you know, select board definition as well.
I, so my understanding is that there is a state definition for what constitutes a legal trail and how it is legally understood. This also includes a class four road and the right of way. It appears that there may be some difference for newly established trails that are then considered legal trails by the select board regarding right of way. Again, I'm not a legal expert. This is just my reading of multiple different policies and interpretations of legal trails. So that, I think that is something that we need to get a little bit more information on. Oh, and Rudy has his hand up, so he probably has information because Rudy is the holder of all knowledge of these things. That's helpful. So go ahead, Rudy.
I would disagree with that part, but it is a defined thing in statute. VSA 19, section 301 defines a legal trail. So that, that is set by statute. There is a, a process if you want something to be newly defined as a legal trail. But a legal trail is, is, there's an existing definition for it. What became more tricky in understanding is so-called unidentified corridors. And that's a lot of what's still under dispute in the courts at this point. But existing legal trails are, are statutorily, statutorily defined thing, so.
Thanks, Rudy. And that, that is partly why we are only considering the four legal trails that the town of Tunbridge has identified. Because those are the ones that show up on the official state highway maps. So whatever, whatever we do, whatever policy recommendation we make only pertains to those four legal trails, not to potential new trails and not to the unidentified corridors, because those are not covered under the statutory definition of a legal trail. So I'm going to go, so just circle back to the first question about if there's questions that the planning commission has about legal trails, usage of maintenance of definition, identification, landowner rights, public access, any of those things that we need to put in our queue to answer with a subject matter expert or outside knowledge holder in an upcoming meeting or as part of the resource sheet. Janet. Janet, you're on mute if you're talking.
Who and how are we gonna, is the question about maintaining the trails, I think. And is that part of our, I mean, I think we want to address that in our, in the policy. Because if we're gonna set something up for the future, we don't want there to be any question in the future about what our intention was for the, the trail itself. So, I mean, I think that that's got to be addressed somewhere. I don't know. I think that part of the statute, Rudy might have some information about that. I know it goes to the select board, so they have to decide that. That's my understanding.
Okay.
Could I ask a quick question? We heard the last time from all the stakeholders who, except for Priscilla, from them. And, and I, I wondered if anyone had talked to her or somebody should talk to her, just to get her views. Certainly you could, isn't available at this point, but just to, to see what kinds of reactions they had had, experiences that they'd had. Just as, as another piece of information to put into our, our packet.
That's a great question, Nancy. Has anybody from the planning commission talked to Priscilla? Or be willing to do some direct outreach? Okay, well, I can give her a jingle.
I can as well, if, if you feel, you know, depending on how you feel. Okay.
Okay.
We can discuss that eventually, but yeah.
Sure. Yeah, that's a good, a good call out, Nancy. I also pitched a number of our questions, as I indicated at the last trails meeting to the League of Cities and Towns. They just responded to Wendy. The backlog was because of town meeting. So we do have answers to the following questions, which I have not even looked at because Wendy just sent them this afternoon. So the questions that I sent included who's responsible for trail upkeep, signage or damage repair, consideration for the landowners regarding trail usage, the relationship to class four roads, liability protection. If a policy disallows a certain use and that continues to happen, then what's the recourse? Can we limit, can we have the policy limit trail usage for groups above a certain size? Can we limit it during sensitive times of year, which I think we already know is a yes, we've understood that from a previous meeting. And then in what ways and specific language about a policy that accounts for usage by logging and or farm equipment? So they provided quite a bit of text and links to statute and existing resource sheets that they have. So I will, planning commission members will get that shared directly and everybody else, that will be put onto the planning commission webpage for your reference. So we do have answers to a number of questions that have come up a couple of times. Are there any other unanswered questions or concerns? So my thinking for the next meeting, since we've heard from a regional town trail organization, the first meeting, RASTA. The second meeting, we heard from the landowners and land trail abutters. And the third meeting, it feels balanced that we should hear from trail users, from frequent trail users that are in the town. So I was going to pitch a similar approach to what the landowners received. So depending on the number of people who want to talk, an equal amount of time, approximately 50 minutes to an hour of the meeting. If that feels like a good approach to the planning commission. Brenda's nodding, Izzy's nodding, Janet's thumbs upping. Okay. Rudy's thumbs upping. Great. So that's a, that's all of us. Shane, great, thank you. So that's what our plan will be. So I will reach out to the frequent trail use groups. And I know some of those folks are on the phone, on the call here tonight. So just be prepared for me to reach out to you and start thinking about how you'd like to use that time to talk about the varieties of trail usage that you engage in. And Eliza's put a message in the chat for those who can see it. Okay, thanks, Eliza, for joining tonight. Okay, and then our last order of business per the agenda was any other business that we need to be considering either outside or inclusive of the trails discussion? Oh, Janet, you're muted, but go.
So, so where are we at now with the town plan? So it's with the select board now? Is that, am I right about that?
That is correct. So the select board, I'm not going to use the proper language that goes with this, but we essentially deliver the select board the edited, updated town plan. And now they are the owners of it and move it through the rest of the process. And they have the right at this point to hold it or vote on it or make edits to it at a time of their deciding. So that's, that's where we're at with that. I've not gotten any updates directly about if they have an anticipated time to vote on it or make edits or bring it up for meeting conversation.
Baxter has a question for you.
Oh, thanks. Yeah, go ahead, Baxter.
Yeah, okay. I am here for the snowmobile club.
Okay, if you can just pause right there. Because public comments at the end. So if you had a question about the, the town plan edits, I would take that now. But if you've got a question about, yeah, trail usage from that perspective, we'll take that here in just a few minutes. So sorry to interrupt you, but Will, I will come back to you, I promise. Thanks. Janet, did that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay. Rudy, you've got a question? Or your hand up?
I'd just like to kind of put a second exclamation point on Janet's point about town, town meeting is going to be here before we know it. So I'd like to think about what we want to be presenting for town meeting this year.
Okay, let's make a group of folks who can think about town meeting presentation. Rudy? Do you want to join me in that?
Sure.
Okay. And then we can, we can work on figuring out exactly what we're going to present and if we want to have any documents to share. Okay. Any other planning commission, other orders of business that we need to attend to? Okay, so the one thing that, that I will say or just mention is that the end of last year, we had talked about new property owners in town and ways to connect with them and engage them in Tunbridge community life. There's been a large number of property transfers in 2020 and new residents here. And so that's something that I'd still like to explore. I think we've got our plates full right now. But maybe just putting that towards a early summer and if we can gather in person, potentially hosting a, something in-person event or in conjunction with another event, just to welcome all of these new Tunbridgeans to town and encourage them to get involved. So just wanted to put that back out there because we had talked about it previously. All right, planning commission members, last call for questions, comments, other orders of business.
I'll jump in real quick. Some of the things that were, I've got to do the, they call it the LEMP, the local emergency plan that goes in, you know, it helps us get the percentage for any damage done in town. It's going to be weird this year because they always like you to wait until after town meeting, but this year they won't let me. So I'll go ahead and get that in before May 1st. I'm probably going to just ditto last year's and cheat on it. But just a quick update, we talked about, the fire department, myself, has still been meeting every Friday and going over the school emergency plan. And we've got, we think we've got a pretty good one started for our town. We put a lot of work into it. The state subcontracted through the agency of education a man to set up the schools for this stuff and we had to throw it out. It was just unratable. You know, I wish we were getting his money. But anyways, we're getting there. So.
Thanks, Brenda. Yeah, good work. From the Orange County Parent-Child Center perspective, I know that that's been very welcome. Okay, so we're going to move into the public comment period. And because I cut Baxter off. Baxter, you can go first, but because we have a number of folks joining us tonight who may or may not want to comment, I'd ask people to use their raise hand function if they know how. Again, to get to that, you open the participants sidebar menu at the bottom of your screen. That gives you a listing of everybody in the call and you'll see a raise hand option at the bottom and you just click on that and you'll see a little blue hand go up. And it puts it in order, so I'll call on people in order. We'll try to keep comments to just a couple of minutes apiece at this point, because I know we've got four already and we've got about 20 minutes left in our meeting time for tonight. So Baxter, you get to kick us off.
Okay.
You hear me?
Yes, loud and clear.
Okay. I'm, I'm here tonight for the snowmobile club. And John, I don't know what his last name is, up there, Edgar Dodger's first. Has been calling me, talking about things and stuff. As you know, he's pretty upset.
Yep. So John's on the, on the call here tonight. He's got his hand raised for comment.
Yeah, and I want to say that if you people get the right of way to go through there, he's shutting us off. The snowmobile trail off. I don't think that should happen. We, as Snowmobile Club, has put a lot of work into these trails. And there's a lot of, quite a lot of vehicles that go over it. I mean sleds. We do not want to lose that. I am the trail master for Tunbridge, and that's what I do. I try to keep everybody happy. If they get a problem, I try to straighten it out. Go talk to them. And it's been very, very good. And I want to say one, one thing too. John has been very, very good to us as far as snow machines go. He has a problem, he calls me, we talk it out, we get it done. Nobody is upset at anybody. I don't want to see this happen. I hope that you people realize what it means. I don't believe it's any way of getting over his land when he's got over 300 acres of land. And if he shuts that up and he's, I'm pretty sure he's going to shut it out to everything, everything. I'm doing, everything is going to be shut right up. And I don't, I don't think that that's necessary. But what the snow machines do, as you might want to know, and you know anyways, that brings in money to the state. If he shuts us off, I have no idea how we're going to get, get through his land ever to go around it. And that means, I don't know. I don't know. We only can groom Potsby up to Stinders Camp and then I turn around and go back. And hell, you're going to, it's going to be a hard job to keep snow machines up or not. I think that you as planning commissioners should really think a lot about that. It's going to, it's really going to hurt, really hurt. We've spent a lot of money on our groomers. If you went right out and bought a brand new groomer, it'd be over $100,000 to groom. We try to buy good used ones. They're probably 80, 90, $100,000. We do get them paid for. We do, we bought a new drag and that is quite expensive too. But we've done it, we worked hard. And we've, we've had very, very good luck with everybody. And I want it to be the same with John. I think you people better think very, very serious about it. I don't want to lose it. And I'm sure I'm not alone on this deal. It seems so. There could be something else done.
Thank you, Baxter. Appreciate it. Yeah, Brenda.
Baxter, I'm, I'm sure John can fill us in a little bit more, but when you were talking about us using it, I, I don't think, I think you meant specific things that, that John had an aversion to, I believe. And also, do your trails, your vast trails are in the winter. You, you probably go on his land also, right? It is private.
Yeah, we go, that main trail comes right down through from Stinders Camp, right down through to his, well, to the town road. And if, I, I do not see any other way around. I don't know. I can't tell you why the lines are or anything, but when he's got 300 and some acres, that's a hell of a lot of land.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify a little bit of what Baxter was saying. Maybe John can clarify it a little more.
Yeah, so we'll, we will go here in order. So Todd, you are next.
Yeah, thanks, Laura. And the planning commission, and it's good, it's like a full planning commission tonight. There's so many different places to go. But first of all, I want to address Baxter. Great to see you, Baxter. And Baxter, in the past, has, on his private land, has permitted use by other sources. And I know that John Etchabria has done that as well. It's unfortunate, and I'm glad that Baxter brought it up, that there is an effort, or at least a comment apparently made by John Etchabria to shut off his private trails. That, of course, is kind of anti-community. But I have a couple of questions, Laura. As far as the select board goes, I just want to be clear on this, that when a final recommendation is given by the planning commission after, it looks like it's going to be extended period now, that might last well past town meeting, is the select board obligated to accept that recommendation? Or could it vote on its own or turn it back to you? So that's one process. And then to go to Nancy Chapman's comment about Priscilla Farnham. I can attest, as a number of people on this call probably could as well, that when Euclid was of sound mind, he was very appreciative of the use of the crossroad. One other important player, actually two important players who are on the select board have not weighed in yet as far as there, and that should have happened if, if they were able to do that at the last meeting about what their positions are on legal trails. And that, of course, would be John O'Brien, who's at the other end of the Orchard Road over to Moody, and of course Gary Mullin. So I just wanted to know if they are unable to do that or whether they may check in at a later point. Thank you.
Thanks, Todd. So I'll respond. To the best of my knowledge, the select board has asked us for a policy recommendation. They are the only body in Tunbridge, public body, that can adopt policies and ordinances. And so if they don't like our policy recommendation or want to edit it or throw it in the garbage, that is their right as the elected decision makers for the town. So they did ask us to create a policy with the understanding that we would go through a deliberative and engaging process with town members. So I think that was part of the reason why they asked us to do that. And I would fully anticipate that they would give any recommendation that we provided them do review and consideration. The other question that you had about if John and Gary are going to add their perspective, I would anticipate that this would be a pretty large conflict of interest for them to provide their perspective as landowners and decision makers on the final policy. And so they may join us for listening sessions, but I, I would not anticipate them to be active participants in guiding the development of a particular policy, knowing that they're going to be the ones that have to vote on it impartially at the end. Michael, you are next.
Thank you very much. First, I want to just put, get something clear out there. Referring back to something Rudy said at the end of the, the last meeting, meeting number two. Rudy, could you just state again, so, so that there's no, there's been some misinformation out there that, that bikes are not allowed per the planning commission, per, per the town plan. Bikes are not allowed on, on legal trails. Could you, could you once again state what, 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 what is now in place about that?
Sure. There, there currently is not, not a policy in place. And that is why the select board has asked for input on developing one. The recommendation in the current plan has a specific item in the recommendations section that number 10 says that the select board should develop a policy regarding legal trail use. There are text references in previous plans. And at one point, there was probably an inappropriate inclusion in the policy section that was really a recommendation, but it got included in the 2013 plan as a policy. We moved that in the 2017 plan to the recommendations section because it really was a recommendation and not a policy. And that stated that that language was in the, the same in both the 2013 and 2017 plans. There was also an entire ancient roads discussion in the 2013 plan that was removed from the 2017 plan because of the evolution of the legal issues. But we don't have an existing policy. We have recommendations.
Okay, good. So anybody who wants to ride a So anybody who wants to ride a bike on legal trails is free to do so right now, right?
There currently is no policy on, on this.
Okay, so um, good, thank you. Um, um, and Baxter, I do want to um, uh, address your point there. Um, you know, you are well respected in town and your, your, your group, um, thank you for, for what you do. Um, I'm really sorry to hear that, that, that there's a threat being thrown on your group by a landowner, um, that just because one thing may happen, that it may affect how you use it, that, that seems a little heavy-handed, I think. Um, that, that you're being threatened to have your vast trail cut, closed down if it sounds like if, if, if legal trails um, allow, allow um, certain uses, then you know, all trails are gonna be shut down. And that's, that, I'm really sorry that you have to go through that and, and, and be, be the brunt of, of that heavy-handed approach. Um, uh, and it's certainly not a community-minded approach, nor one, an inclusive uh, approach. So really, um, uh, I, I, I'm sorry that you're in that position. I think, I think things can work out going into the future to address everybody's needs. And you know, I think, I think if, if, if certain areas get shut down, it would be unfortunate, but I bet, I bet some other landowners would step up and, and, and cer- and help you out um, just in case, in case you get shut down in other areas. Um, that's all I have, thanks.
Thanks Michael. Nancy.
Yeah, I have a, a quick question, so almost for Rudy, I guess, but um, I guess I was under the assumption, under, on page fifty-four, I'm on the, the 2017, um, that it does say that we have, you know, X number of miles and of legal trails that can be used by the public for hiking, and I think that's the confusion. And then on page fifty-five, under our recommendations, we have this thing that says, given the inter- the interest in the benefits of biking, hiking, snowmobiling, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, the town should consider, um, let's see, as an alternative to complete, um, that was the discontinuing of highways, but so, so, but it mentions all these other forms of usage. And I think it, it seemed, when I was reading it, that seemed to be where the confusion was, rather than, you know, that, that it did say for hiking at one point, and then someplace else we said, well, maybe we need to look at it for other uses, so.
Right, the confusion is understandable. Um, it says in the text part of the document, these trails can be used for hiking. And it doesn't mention other uses in that passage. In the recommendations section, and in the 2013 plan, it was in the policies, we moved it to the recommendations in the 2017 plan. And that says, given the interest in, and benefits from biking, hiking, snowmobiling, cross-country skiing, and similar outdoor recreational activities, the town should, as an alternative to complete discontinuance of a highway, give full consideration to preserving class four roads for recreational use by downgrading their status to a legal trail and thus retaining the public's interest in them. And these legal trails were all downgrades from class four roads. So, that, that, it's, it's understandable that, that that's confusing. The, the text reference says they can be used for hiking, and it does not mention other uses there. The recommendations section has the other uses stated as part of that. So it, it's understandable, there would be confusion.
Thanks Rudy.
And I think that's why, the so, and that's why we placed a recommendation in the 2020 plan that a policy be developed.
Thank you Rudy. Uh, John, you are up next.
Yeah, let me just say, I am furious um, with the approach of this special interest bicycle lobby, uh, and its war on landowners. It is infuriating to me and my family, having purchased the Dodge Farm, having given away all the development rights on the Dodge Farm, having opened it to massive public use. And we get a lot of use, we have kids going up and having camping, camping and fires and, and we have horseback riding, and we have a major trail, and we have the snow machine, and I have a tenant who complains all about the massive amount of public use, and I have a wife that's complaining about all the massive public use, and the attitude of people in the community is, that's ours, you gave us that, you allowed all that, and that's a vested entitlement to the town. And now we want to drive bicycles right through your farmyard, and you can't complain about that. And no, we don't want to hear about all the things you're doing for the community, because that's already, you know, the, you already, the community's already got that, the community's entitled to that. And John, you can't, no, you can't, you've gotta, you know, just deal with our desire now to have bikes. And no, it's not permissible for you, John, to say, look, if I've got snow machines and I've got horses and I've got hikers and I've got snow, uh, people on, on snowshoes and skis, and, and then, then bikers on top of that, and I go, this is too damn much, I'm not allowed to do that? I, I think that, that the lack of respect for the interest of the landowners is just completely destructive of what Iowa thought Tunbridge was all about. I, I think it's just crazy. I have a wonderful relationship with the Vermont Horse Association. Baxter Dowd is one of my favorite people in the whole world. I've never had any problem with the Tunbridge walkers. I don't know what's mo- wrong with the bicycle lobby, but they are a destructive force, as far as I'm concerned. Having said that, two questions. On the, on these visits, I, I didn't, I came in late, as you may have gathered, um, are you gonna alert me and other landowners to when these visits are scheduled?
Yeah, the plan is that Brenda, Izzy, and Janet are gonna lead up that effort, and they'll be contacting landowners that, in which the trails are located, to find a time that works and is, you know, acceptable to have a gr- a planned larger group making a walk and stopping to talk and different things. So expect to hear from somebody.
We don't want a major spreader event.
No, we will be, the expectation is that we will follow all public health guidelines, masked, distanced, we'll be outside. Um, I would anticipate that people will be driving in their own vehicles or making choices that...
And I, and I'm sure that people from Burlington who have all sorts of subject matter expertise, that the landowners have relevant information that even the subject matter experts might benefit from.
Yeah.
And we need to figure out where everybody's gonna park and everything else. So anyway, you'll let us know about the schedule.
We will be in contact.
The, the final thing I want to mention has to do with, um, you know, the reason this, this whole exercise about the trails is because the special interest bike lobby is trying to open up these trails. And that, and they're, you know, that's been their, their cause. And so now they've put this on the agenda for the town, and we're having all these meetings and all these debates about these trails. But the, the, it's, it's a much, there's a much larger issue here, which is bicycles in the town, and on the, on the uh, established public roads that are maintained by the town, but more importantly, the class four roads, um, which are much more, they're larger, uh, they're more significant as they, as a public resource, they raise some of the other conflicts as well. And I think from a planning perspective, from a planning perspective, for you guys to be bi- be myopically focusing on these two and a half acres of, two and a half miles of trail, um, and at least half of which are completely useless for, for any extensive public purpose, and not thinking about the class four trails and how they should be used, and how they shouldn't be used, is just, is, is, uh, is, is missing the boat. I mean, you should, you need to take a broader view uh, uh, of the, of the challenges facing the community presented by this, this massive new demand for, for bicycle use.
Thanks John, duly noted. Okay, so we are at seven thirty, um, so we'll take comment from, um, I think Todd, you were first, and then Michael, and then that will likely be the end of the meeting tonight.
All right, real quick, um, yeah, I hope that folks, I'm glad you're recording this, I hope that uh, we will sort of spread the word of these meetings to go back to more people being informed, the upcoming survey, to see what the viewpoints are, and definitely including John's comments there. And I would also recommend that folks uh, go back to get a little bit more of John's rationale to the select board meeting of August sixteenth, which is available online on the recording. I think that's really important to see sort of the difference between at least this one individual landowner, there are no other landowners on this call tonight, were some the other night, and we had to participate, but um, it's, it's kind of interesting how it's all evolving, and I look forward to future meetings. And once again, thanks to the planning commission.
Thanks Todd. All right, Michael.
Yeah, I, I just want to, um, I guess respond here that the, that, um, you know, I, I think Mr. Cheveria, um, when he bought the Dodge Farm, probably, probably read the deed, um, and, and in that deed, I'm sure he read that there is a, a public right of way through there, a legal trail. And so, I mean, it, I guess it's tough, but he, he did buy the land knowing that there was a legal trail there. So, you know, I, I feel for him, um, but, but, but yet this is, this belongs to, it's, it's a public right of way, and class four roads are, will, should come into the discussion in, in, in some way, because there, there's some relation um, to these. But in terms of legal right of way, going by the, the house, like, you know, that's, you, you knew that that, that was the case, um, when you purchased the land, and you know, that's tough.
All right. Thank you, Michael. So I believe that that is everybody who's had their hands raised. Is there anybody who has not spoken who would like to provide public, uh, public comment at this point? John, is that a new hand or an old hand?
Uh, it's a new hand.
Okay, go ahead.
I mean, we can debate this about whether I was entitled to rely on the plan language uh, about what the uses are that Nancy quoted. It's not policy, but it's as much as there is policy that exists out there. And I don't think you can deny, Michael, that, that this, this revolutionary interest in bicycles is something new and completely different and completely unanticipated to the entire community. But setting aside that, there's, there's no public entitlement to the three hundred and twenty-five acres of the Dodge Farm. Okay? And the fun of the things the community's got to think about is, do they want to placate the bicycle lobby and give up access to the rest of the Dodge Farm, or do they want to balance all the various uses? And you know, I, I'm sorry, you know, we're, we're not gonna accept all the uses you want. We're not gonna say you, you're entitled to all the gooses we've granted, and you know, if you want bicycle on top of that, well then you get that. There's gonna be a trade-off. I don't know if that's true with the other trails, but there would be a trade-off on, in this instance, and I think the, the community's got to take a, a hard look at what it, what it wants. And what, and what, whether it wants to work cooperatively with the landowner, or whether it wants to wage war on the landowner. I've gone out of my way to be cooperative. And, and if the town takes the attitude, well, we don't, we don't really don't care about your interests, and it's tough for you, that's not gonna end well, that is not gonna end well.
Thank you, John. Okay, we actually just had one other person join, um, so I'll give them a minute to get connected in case they wanted to make comment. Michael, I'll call on you one last time, um, but again, public, public comments not meant to be a dialogue between those making public comments.
Right, right, yeah, no, no, I'll, 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 I'll forego. But thank you for calling, but I don't need to.
Okay. Yeah, no worries. And then I think, right, you just joined, I don't know if you were just joining to join, or if you had something that you wanted to say, knowing that this was the time for public comment.
Uh, no, this is both Matt and right, we just had to step out and I was just rejoining.
Okay, no worries, just wanted to check in with you there, given the scheduled and the published agenda. Okay, anybody else wanna offer comment um, tonight? Okay. Oh, Janet? Oh, Baxter and then Janet.
Okay.
My turn?
Yep, go ahead Baxter.
Okay, I just want to say that you people better really think about this, and it's gonna, if this does come down to him shutting everybody off, you people, I hope, realize what it's gonna do. It's gonna, it's gonna hurt us terrible, the Snow Machine Club. We don't want to lose it.
You have to go over here.
We try to, we've been working really hard with John, and John's worked with us. I see no problem whatsoever, but this is his house, his land, and he has a right to do what he wants to. And I, I feel so bad that if this happens, I think there's gonna be a lot of people upset about, about this. Because if, if he posts it for nobody, bikes, whatever, I don't blame him for having the Jeeps going up and down that hill of his. He wanted to know real vehicle signs, I got him some, he put them up. I don't know, I, I think this is gonna be a hard subject, but I hope that you people on the planning commission really think about this. Thank you very much for having me.
Thanks Baxter. All right, Janet, go ahead.
So I guess my one comment is that, um, I mean, class four roads are definitely part of this in the bigger picture, and I, I think you're right, John, about that, this is, encompasses a lot more, but I think what the select board has directed us to in this, at this moment in time, is just to deal with legal trails. But I definitely agree with you that this is a, you know, it's gonna be probably ongoing and, you know, we'll have more to deal with at a later date, but the job at hand is just the legal trails right now, to my understanding.
Thanks Janet. All right, any other comments for tonight?
So this, this is Matt, and I apologize, I had another commitment and had to drop off. I guess it certainly sounds as if uh, I missed some substance in this meeting, and I would, I, you know, I certainly understand Baxter's uh, point of view. I think we have to consider all of the uses and, you know, and there are people advocating for bikes and for hiking, there are four-wheelers, there are snowmobilers whom we have to consider as well. I think putting ourselves in a position where any individual landowner whose land abuts class four roads or legal trails has the ability to say, if you don't do this, I'm gonna shut off access to my land. And, but then, you know, we are beholden to that landowner, and I, I mean, I, I suspect that Mr. Etcheverria, Etcheverria isn't saying, I will make a perpetual commitment to Tunbridge that I will give access to my land. Um, but instead he's saying, and, and I, I apologize if I'm misconstruing what's going on here, but instead he's saying, you know, if you don't do this, I'm going to withdraw access to my land. But what's to prevent him from doing, or, or any other landowner, the Chesters, or, you know, others who open up their land, who don't post their land, from saying, if I don't get what I want, I'm going to do this? And so I think it exposes us to blackmail, and certainly I've... And I've, blackmail is a somewhat loaded term, and I apologize for that, but I'm, I'm certainly sensitive to what Baxter's said. Um, but you know, as I said in the last meeting, these are public rights of way. They, you know, that the, the grading that we're looking at from class one to class four to legal trail, all of those changes don't affect the townspeople's right to use the property, they simply affect the town's obligations to maintain the right of way. They simply affect the town's obligations to maintain the right of way. And, you know, I think if we were to look at the records, I suspect if we were to look at either, you know, the purchase agreement. Or my understanding is that there is an easement. On the on Mr. Echeverria's property, I suspect that we would find that these legal trails are mentioned in there. You know, they are, they are public, you know, there's no secret about these being legal trails. So I, you know, again, I apologize and I apologize if I haven't come in late, I misunderstood what was going on. But I think being in a position where any one landowner threatens to do something unless they get their way, really. Really exposes us to significant risk as a town.
Thank you, Matt. Anybody else like to make a comment to that tonight that hasn't spoken? Susan, do you have a question?
No, I just want to just say I am in support of the landowners. You know, people that don't, people that post their land. Can I just go and demand that I can, you know, go all over their land? I mean, the landowners have some rights. And I think that John has opened his land to so many people. That we should just respect that. And any of the other landowners that have on the, I mean, I don't understand what is the big deal about two point four or five miles of legal trails? What is behind these bicycle people? I I just don't get it. So hopefully, you know, the planning commission can come up with some answers. And a survey that would reflect the rationale. So that the towns, the people of Tunbridge can make an informed decision. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you, Susan, and I would just remind everybody on the call. That the legal trails are different, it's a different consideration than when you post your private property. Because legal trails are considered a public right of way, even if they cross private property. So that is a very critical and important distinction to make. That they are held for use by the public and that the landowner cannot post a legal trail. Access or crossing. And that is the work that the select board has given to the planning commission to define the use of. And the allowable uses of different modes of transportation across the legal trails that we have, which is why it's. Critical that we consider all uses and all perspectives, because that is a hundred percent of our legal trails. Which encapsulates the public access to use them. Not. Property that is allowed for use because of the landowner's goodwill or posted because of the landowner's not wanting people to cross it. So it is a, it is a different conversation and a different consideration of land use. Okay. We are at seven forty eight. And Michael and John, you both have your hands up, you've both spoken a number of times, but we'll call on you one more time. And then if anybody else has not spoken, that has spoken, then you'll have your say then. And John, you put your hand down, so is that a, you don't want to say anything or? You're good, you're good, all right. Michael, go ahead.
Yes, just in response to Susan, you know, it's it's it, yes, you could, one way to look at this is it's just two point five miles. There there are some some parts of those, some of those trails, though, are key key connectors to. You know, to sort of like one place to another, so between Monarch Hill and Whitney Hill. You know, I I think that if a family wanted to do. Some some walking or biking, then they would have to walk down Monarch Hill Road, walk along one ten, which would be a significant risk. And then walk up Whitney Hill Road, whereas is if they wanted to. Walk or ride their bike across the crossroad, then they could maintain that elevation. So it's not, it's it's, and 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 one of the problems is if we start restricting uses here and there. Or even on specific of of the legal trails. Then, you know, in ten years, there's going to be another little chip away at it and then another little chip. And then at some point, the legal trails will be closed. And 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 we need to be considering more. Opportunities and options for 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 the public. Rather than fewer. Of course, there there, you know, there's, there are plenty of models around. Where public pub and private partnerships, you know, people do open their land for for trails and that kind of thing. And that's, it's it's wonderful. But in terms of the public trails, we we don't want to lose anything. And we don't want to have any restrictions on what those trails can do. That's, it's just opening the door to further and further restrictions and then potentially elimination. And it could, it could, it could also then tumble down into class four roads. And then, you know, the 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 residents of the town will have fewer options rather than more options.
All right, thanks, Michael. So Baxter, you've got your hand up.
Yeah, I just have a question here. When you, when you people on the planning commission, when you get your stuff all done. The select have the say whether. You go or whether you don't go. On a trail. And does the state of Vermont have anything to do with this?
I'm not sure I know what the question is in there, besides, does the state of Vermont have anything to do with it?
Yeah, I'm saying when you and the planning commission get right down, you've got it all figured out. But what you want. Does a select man have the last say? They can tell you yes or no, you can go or you can't.
Yes.
But the state, does the state have their fingers in this too?
So the state provides the legal framework that establishes. How a number of things happen, how the select board has oversight of town policies and ordinances. They are the public body that can enact those specific policies and ordinances. And the only public body in this town that can do that enact specific policies and ordinances. So the state, I would say, is indirectly engaged by providing the framework in which we operate. And you are correct that the policy, the policy recommendation. That we provide the select board ultimately goes to them for their either edit. Vote to approve and adopt or vote to deny. So that that is, we are responsible for, we have been charged with developing a recommendation. That the select board will ultimately take the final action on. Supported by a number of different statutory guidelines and authorities that are given to them by law by the state of Vermont. Okay. So I don't see anybody else. Who would like to say anything for tonight? Just a reminder that we have our next meeting, trails meeting. Next Wednesday. So in just six days, we'll be reconvening for the third session. This time focused on or giving the floor to. Multi use users of the trails. And so those folks can expect to have some time to share their opinions, thoughts, perspectives on trail use. And impacts of not being able to use the trails or being able to use the trails in specific ways during specific times of year. And there, of course, will be public comment period during that meeting. Those are meant to be more discussional for folks that have joined this meeting and not the other meetings. If that's the case. So I want to thank everybody for joining and for sticking with us for a little bit extra. Appreciate all of the public participation, it's important to have voices at the table, and we certainly appreciate it. So planning commission members, we've got our next orders, a couple of different groups with some work to do. And we'll see everyone next week, agenda forthcoming. And as always, feel free to get in contact with myself or the other planning commission members between if you've got questions or comments. All right, thanks, everyone, have a good night.
Thanks, planning commission.
Thanks.